Thank you all, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen. Let me get a little bit closer. All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting. Open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, January 7, 2020. At this time, before we get started, would you all please rise with me and let's salute the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. And just for housekeeping, Ms. Jane Wellman got stuck at work. She's gonna try to make it tonight, hopefully she'll make it tonight, but she got locked down at work, that's all for housekeeping, Ms. Melissa. All right, I'm trying to look, so let me jump in, right to schedule items. I'm looking here, it's 7:03, we're gonna get started. Our 7 o'clock appointment, Chopsticks, is actually off the board for this, for this selectmen reading, correct, Mr. Montori?
Correct.
All right, cool. So we have two minutes, it's almost 7:05 until our next scheduled item. So with that being said, what I'd like to do quickly is jump to Town Manager. So we have two invoices, we have a senior town council invoice for November 2019, and a town council invoice for December 1, 2019, through December 15, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that is correct, and I would recommend payment of senior town council's invoice for November 2019 in the amount of $4,282.90.
So moved. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Aye, unanimous.
And then, town council's invoice from December 1st to December 15, 2019, I would recommend payment in the amount of $2,932.50.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. That was very quick, and we'll take any other Town Manager business up when we come up, but I think, I think that might be it.
That's it.
We'll go through the budgets, that kind of ties into you. So, with that being said, why don't we jump into 7:05 scheduled appointment, DLC Hospitality, DBA, Skybox Restaurant, change of owner, officer stock or ownership interest application. Please come forward.
I'd like to waive the notice of public hearing.
I have a motion to waive the reading for the public notice.
I'll second that.
Motion a second, all's in favor? Aye. Unanimous. All right, welcome tonight, and maybe just jump in, kind of state the order of business.
My name's Ken Cattillo, I am the principal owner of DLC. This is Tammy Mincello, she's our manager of record for our liquor license. The purpose of our application is to request that my son, Chris, who was originally my partner in buying this Skybox, be taken out of our company. He's decided to go back to college, owning a sports bar wasn't quite right for him, and so that's the purpose of the application and our request today.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'll open up to the board, I can just state for the record, all of the paperwork, and it's always hefty, all the paperwork is in order, so at this point, let me open up to the board for questions. Comments?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Krappman?
No, just seems like a simple change, removing your son off the thing and making him the prime owner, so it seems pretty straightforward, thank you.
Astronik?
My only comment is, I believe that because of the liquor license that this goes before, does this go before ABCC as well, or is this the end of the line for them?
I believe it goes to the ABCC also, just, but I can double check on that.
Yeah, and at this point, I'm relying on our attorney, John Cannell, for that type of thing, but I'm happy to check.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, there is, I believe that there's another step in this process, that doesn't have to do with this board, but I just want to note that for the record. Other than that, everything seems fine to me.
Okay, same deal here, I mean, I think you guys run a class act down there, been in there, class act, great food, great atmosphere, so you're doing a very great job.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you from the community.
Thank you.
Very good. With that being said, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. All right, at this time, let me pause, would anyone like to come up, anyone like to come up and speak? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion, and a mayor has a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Like to make a motion to approve the DLC Hospitality LLC DBA Skybox Restaurant, change of officer's stock or ownership interest application as presented tonight before the Board of Select.
I have a motion for Mr. Brian Dick, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, all's in favor? All right, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good luck to your son.
Thank you.
Just looking, we have two more minutes, just to be official, actually it's 7:10. What I'd like to do now is move to our scheduled item for 7:10, Tuxbury House of Pizza, new common victual application, anyone present?
We have Main Street Pizza.
Yeah, you're next, you're next. This is the Tuxbury House of Pizza, very close though, very close. Mr. Montori, do we need anyone present there, look very, very straightforward?
Straightforward, it's a change of ownership.
Simply put, change of ownership.
For the common victual license, there's no other license involved.
Now typically, you know, we have a packet this big, but just because of the chain of ownership, and I do believe because no alcohol is involved.
Correct.
This one is pretty cut and dry, the cookie cutter, literally just, they submit the application first fee, and what we do is just write the new name for the common victual license, is that accurate?
Correct.
Straightforward, so at this point, any questions from the board? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the common victual license for Matthew Doughty at 220, I'm sorry, 2254 Main Street, Tuxbury, Mass, for Tuxbury House of Pizza as presented.
That is a mouthful. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, Ms. Melissa. So let me just take a quick peek, because the next one is a public hearing. So it's 7:09, so we do have 10 minutes. Yeah, why don't we jump to board reports? Ms. Stronik?
I'll be happy to start the board reports.
Awesome.
First of all, I'd just like to wish the community a Happy New Year, and all the best to 2020. With regards to my board report, we, last meeting, I had mentioned that the Elementary Building Committee was going to be meeting to submit the 60% design completion, we actually canceled that meeting, because we did not feel that we were prepared at that time to move forward. That meeting will now be held next Thursday, which was our regular scheduled meeting, Thursday, January 17. And we will be then looking at those 60 cent documents. There were some bids that came in that were somewhat of a surprise to us, so we wanted to take our time to get that right, which is what we did with our project team. So that will be moving forward, so that was a change from what I reported last time. With regards to the Events Committee, they are meeting this Thursday, getting ready for some summer fun, and looking at some things that they're gonna be doing, and cleaning up from the tree lighting ceremony that I reported on last time. With regards to local housing, at this point, we do not have a date, I believe that the chairman is meeting with the Town Manager and the Assistant Manager to review some projects, and then we'll be coming forward with an agenda. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you very much. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, the Field Subcommittee meeting, Field Subcommittee met with the Town Manager, the Project Management Team, the Construction Management Team, to discuss the field specifics and details of the field, things to finalize, so that seems to be moving forward, it was good to get a good update on that, on the field and all the things associated with it, and timeline. We're scheduled to probably set another meeting up, second week in February, so the week before school vacation. So we're working with them, they took away a couple of challenges that we presented them, and they're gonna come back with some discussions, some decisions, in the next week or so, so we continue to take minutes, take minutes, post those meeting minutes up on the website, and just moving forward with the Elementary Building Committee, so all is good. That's about it.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Brian Dick.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
My apologies, I have one more thing.
Sure, no sweat.
With regards to the Elementary School Building Committee, we were supposed to have a conservation, we were supposed to be presenting to the Conservation Board, and we, due to some requests that have come in, that meeting is being taken off of the conservation. So the notices did not go to the butters as timely as we would like, and we do not want to proceed with that without giving people due notice. So we will not be meeting until February 5th with the Conservation Committee, so I just want to put that out publicly, because that meeting was scheduled for tomorrow night. Right?
Correct.
Sorry, thank you.
No, that's important, all for residents, because I know...
People are paying attention.
Right, and you've been extremely involved since the get-go, so nice.
Yep, and we didn't give enough notice, so we want to take that into account.
Very good, nice call out.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Krappman?
I have a couple of things. Thursday, last Thursday of the month, I had a meeting with the Lowell Regional Transit Board, I have some good news to announce, that we had applied to, for additional grants to continue the Sunday service. The Sunday service, through the LRTA, with all the cities and towns that are covered by that, Tuxbury is the number one use for the Sunday service, for the rides that are getting served. We've advertised it, we put it out there, people are really enjoying it, being able to get to either to Lowell, to shopping, or going to the malls, where they can get transfers, go up to Tinsborough, go to Wilmington, go anyplace they want to, get the church, get to the senior center, they're taking advantage of it, go shopping on Sundays, something that we advertise, people love it, and our service along Route 38 is the number one service that they're using on a Sunday. So we've applied, we've extended the service, so that's gonna continue through this year, and hopefully we'll keep that permanently, but for now, it's gonna at least continue through next year. We are still looking at, we brought new buses, and there's upgrades to a lot of the different services, a lot of handicap access, widening the buses, those type of things, so that more people can bring their shopping on the buses and those type of services, so it's very productive, things are going well, so I'm happy to report, good news of that. Economic Development, we kind of took a break during the holiday season, we're making a lot of progress, we put new applications in different formats up, and we updated our website, we're meeting with the chambers, getting some different information, we're gonna be meeting with business owners, and hopefully in the spring, we're gonna be promoting and trying to get some, really pushing for some economic development to move forward in this community. Zoning Bylaw Committee met last night, there's gonna be some new dates, the chair's gonna read off shortly for meetings on that, it's going well, we've been listening to the recommendations. If you go to our town website, there's an email address, there is other information up there, so there's the new changes that are, that are being proposed, we want to hear from the residents, we want you to get on there, we're gonna have public meetings, please come out and voice your opinion to these things, nothing is locked in stone, we want to hear from you. So please come out and tell us what you want, how you want things changed, we're working for you. There's, like you said, there's an email in there, where if you have questions, or you want something changed, you can submit them, there's all kinds of information, there's Steve Sadwick's numbers there, you can contact him, and we want, we're gonna have more public meetings, and we're gonna listen to what the residents want, and hopefully we'll get those changes made, and then we'll bring it to town meeting, where everybody will have a say on that. And the only last thing I want to say is, last Friday, we had a send-off for Chief Sheen, it was a great ceremony, I want to thank all the cities and towns that came out, there was police chiefs and deputy chiefs from across Massachusetts, all across, everywhere. It was a nice ceremony for him and his family. We have Deputy Chief and Acting Chief right now, John Voto, taking over right now, until the, with the final applications are gone through and the tests are done, but I think it was a very nice ceremony, the country club was packed, it was, and it was a great ceremony for a man who did a lot for our community, I want to thank him and his family for what they've done, and I wish him the best of luck, and I want to wish John luck going, moving forward, and leading us until we get to, we finalize a new chief, a new appointment. So I just, that's all I have tonight.
Well said. And just to piggyback on Mr. Krappman, that's incredible, for 33 years, the chief, if you think about it, wakes up, puts his uniform on, for our community, for us, for us and Tuxbury's finest, and I always said he was the Bill Belichick of police chiefs, if he would do something that was commendable in any area, and receive an award, he'd be humbly saying, "Thank you," and then pass everything down to his team, it's all about team, 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 and I know Mr. John Voto, he's the same way, and John, thanks for doing the same exact thing, and protecting Tuxbury. I always say, Tuxbury, people say, "Why do you love Tuxbury?" Tuxbury's safe, and the folks in Tuxbury, they have character, and they're beautiful people, and that's a big, big thing, and that's always thanks to Tuxbury Finest, so that was, that was very impressive for Chief Sheen, we will miss the chief. All right, just a couple announcements to dovetail into Mr. Mark Krappman, the Zoning Bylaw Committee, public presentations, we have a bunch of dates, I'm just gonna highlight a few, and remember, this is to advertise all the work they've done, and to seek input. So we always typically get a lot of calls at an individual level, so we definitely encourage the folks to show up, understand what bylaws, what zoning bylaws may change, and it's good to put the input at these meetings, not necessarily through a call, although, when we do get calls, we always bring them to Mark's attention. So, quick meeting dates, January 14th, Tuesday, January 14th, at 6:30 at Main Hall here, Wednesday, January 15th, at the Senior Center, at 10 a.m., and then Thursday, January 23, 6 p.m., again here at Main Tower, at Main, in this very room, again, we'll, third one is January 23, 6:30 p.m. And again, what we'll do is to review the bylaws, and open for discussion, so whoever comes, you can provide feedback per Mr. Mark Krappman. Next. All right, NimCOG, NimCOG, pop quiz, what does NimCOG stand for? North Middlesex? Council on Governments, thank you. Right, and essentially what NimCOG is, it's a combination of a lot of selectmen, a lot of different towns, I believe it's seven or eight communities, and Ms. Jane Wellman, she represents the Board of Selectmen, so what they do is get together, they work with a coalition from Massachusetts to essentially put a five-year plan, and one of those, because folks always say, "What does NimCOG do?", and one of the big plans is around roads, as a matter of fact, NimCOG has, over the five-year plan, has helped us develop all Route 38, so thanks to NimCOG and our involvement, in the next year and a half, we're gonna almost pretty much get 80% of Route 38 finally, hooray, finally paved, and we've done a lot of work, and I always give Mr. Krappman a lot of credit there, for fighting that battle, so NimCOG's very important, so this is where we kind of say, "Hey, here are our five-year priorities," this is, we call it our wish list, and then we see which ones may or may not get approved, and I can tell you, Ms. Jane Wellman, she's a fighter, so she's gonna go in there at this meeting and prioritize, and I'm quite sure that little portion of 38 that's not paved, is gonna be top of mind, so we can actually get Route 38, once and for all, paved from Lowell up to Wilmington, and that's gonna be well overdue for, over the last bunch of years. Like, did I cover everything, Mr. Montori, and I know Mr. C, the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. C, Steve Sauer, also represents NimCOG on that, on that board.
You covered everything.
And that meeting is scheduled for the public, January 21st, 2022, it's crazy to say 2020 now, is it? So it's January 21 from 6 to 8, and that's at the library, again, January 21, 6 to 8 at the public library, and refreshments will be served, so that's a bonus. All right, and last but not least, I'm part of the Committee for Tax Relief, we're actually gonna get that going, essentially what we do is, we have a pool of about $9,000, which essentially was donations, if you think about it, from residents, that kind of have, to give seniors a significant tax break. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna fire that committee up, and I think the committee was dormant for about six years, and ultimately, we're gonna use that 9,000, because it's been sitting there, and then we're gonna have draft up a certain application, where you have to have a criteria, and we're gonna see if we can help some very needy and deserving folks in Tuxbury. So listen, it's not gonna solve world hunger, but there might be a handful of folks, or maybe a handful of folks, that get a couple dollars for tax relief, so it's gonna be a cool thing, and then we'll probably, at the end of the 9,000, we'll probably shut that committee down, so I just want to give an update on the tax relief committee, any questions from the board on that one? Because I've been getting a lot of questions on that one, so it's pretty cool, and hopefully we can help some folks in the very near future, give them a little bit of relief. And last but not least, we're on the Tuxbury Reuse Committee, and that's a big one, I see Mr. Keith Sullivan, he's the Chair of the School Committee, he's also on the committee, and that's a big one, so what we're doing, and I see Mr. Christopher Long, also in the audience here, so essentially, we all know that we have the new elementary school going up there, so we're gonna decommission the North Street School, and we're gonna decommission the Trahan, and so what this committee is all about is saying, "Hey, we have a blank canvas as a committee of seven, and want to make recommendations after we do a lot of work to say, what do we do with those parcels?", we have a lot of ideas, I can tell you right now, some folks say, "Open space," some folks say, "A park," some folks say, "We need senior and veteran housing," which we desperately need, so we have nothing set in stone, we have a blank canvas, and we have a good working committee, we've met twice, and I would expect in its next six months, to really get rocking and rolling, as to what we can do, how we can do, and again, everything that we suggest, remember, has to go to town meeting, so it's not like our committee owns the votes, everything that we put forward would have to get a vote through town meeting, I want to stress that, but that's pretty much all what we're doing for the, for the reuse committee, so. Last but not least, I lied, I told the fib, this Saturday at 9, 9 o'clock, Mr. Richard Montori and I will be on the radio, it's, what's it called, WCAP, WCAP, right, and that's 9:80 a.m., and this is annual, so we'll go there for a half hour, we'll answer a bunch of questions from the fellow that runs it, and I know that's Mr. Montori's favorite part of being the Tuxbury Town Manager, is to do the radio show yearly, so we'll be doing that at 9 a.m. Right, Mr. Montori, we're good?
Now that I do it with you, it is my favorite, yes.
That's good. And last but not least, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. John Voto, Acting Chief, I know that's huge, huge shoes to fill with Chief Sheen, but I know, I know you're a very good guy, stand-up, stand-up guy, and Tuxbury's lucky that you can kind of plug and play, and represent the town, or lead the town, leads Tuxbury Finest, so I thank you, Mr. John Voto, that's all. All right, why don't we move in, and that's all I have, so why don't, at this point, we're gonna move into, I know Mr. Scaron is ready to go, it's 7:20, perfect, we're gonna move into, Main Street Sports Grill Corporation, all liquor applications at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the public notice.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, do I have a second, all's in favor? What's the motion, what's the pleasure of the board, all's in favor? Aye, sorry, unanimous, all right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Happy New Year, Robert Scaron, attorney in Tuxbury here, also a member of the Board of Health, I'm not here on any Board of Health related business, this is unrelated business, I'm representing Leo and Paul Kirkhollis this evening, they are expanding Main Street Pizza, as you may be aware, they have sought permits, they've taken over an adjacent space, the old embroidery space, they've now combined the spaces to improve their business, which has been in town here for quite a number of years, and they are very proud of. Formerly known as Main Street Pizza, they're changing that to a new corporate structure, they've set up a new corporate structure, that's one of the forms of relief they're seeking here this evening, they'll now be known as the Main Street Sports Grill. With that, the notices have gone out, the publications have been presented in the newspaper, and we are here seeking your assent this evening for the change of category, as well as the alteration of the premises, and the transfer of the license to all liquor on premises, they'll be surrendering the beer and wine license. With that, I'd leave it to the board.
Very good, thank you. At this point, I'll open up the board, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brian Dick?
Not so many questions, but just wanted to say how pleased I am that this is happening, and these guys come before the board. I believe Main Street Pizza's been there for over 20 years, and has been a good, a good partner with the community, whether it's schools, residents, they continue to support the residents of Tuxbury, whether it's fundraising, donations, things like that. I believe they have the, they have the beer and wine right now, and there hasn't been any issues that I'm aware of, and so I appreciate that, as a business, and just being a big supporter of new business in town, you know, seeing that the application is in order, Mr. Zerulus has reviewed it, and there were some things that were corrected, but he approved all the corrections, so I just wanted to say how pleased I am that this is happening, and I'm all in favor of this.
All right, thank you. About Ms. Stronik?
I am not going to belabor the point, and I thank Mr. Dick for his comments, I agree with them, and my only question is, in reviewing the documents, noting that Mr. Zerulus also noted that there are some documents that aren't signed, and I'm assuming that they're going to be signed and executed pending our vote.
They are going to be signed and executed, I believe there's two documents that need to be signed by the current corporate president.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to check on, thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Krappman?
No, I just want to thank you, I mean, this is, this is great news, not only as the selectman, but also as the Chair of Economic Development, I love to see local business expanding, I think the work that we're gonna be doing on Route 38, I know it's been a lot of headaches for a lot of the businesses, yeah, I see you shaking your head. But it's, you know, unfortunately, you know, we had to get the utility work out there, we had to get those things done, but we're hoping to have a nice, brand-new paved road shortly. I know it's a lot of work, but it's like, when it's all done, then businesses will be happy, that the people can drive up and down that road, you'll get traffic, it'll be, we'll be bringing more people to you, people will be loving to drive up on 38 instead of using Whipple. But, no, expansion, I think it's, you're a great business, you've done great for the community, as my colleague, Mr. Dick, has said, you've supported all the sports teams, I know they, they're constantly running in there getting pizza, and you're great for our community, I just want to thank you for being in a great, you know, company that supports our community, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Very good. Okay, I'll have some comments, but I just want to turn to Mr. Montori, as far as the liquor license in general, I know we went to Town Hall, how do we stand as far as available liquor licenses?
I think this is the last one available.
And, just outside of this, when do we potentially expect to get to receive more? Do we have?
It's hard to say, we still owe them some information to really be specific on where we want the new licenses to go, so it's gonna be a while.
All right, well, if we have one left, I'm glad it's going to these gentlemen, is it Paul and Leo by chance?
Yes.
I can just echo this, sometimes businesses, we truly try to be business-friendly in town, I know sometimes we have, we get hit on the head for not being business-friendly, but I can tell you, I don't know you gentlemen personally, but I can tell you, being at so many events, the level of donations and what you do for the community, you're another beautiful business, that never takes any credit, you guys fly under the radar, but you're so generous to the community and to the town, so I cannot thank you enough, so I'm happy that we're gonna have a vote here pretty soon, and you guys will gobble up the last liquor license in town, well deserved, wonderful to the community, I thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. If there's no other questions from the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the all liquor application license for Main Street Sports Grill Corporation.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor? Unanimous, thank you guys so much, congratulations, thank you guys.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
This is impressive, Mr. Montori, 7:30 on the button, and so now we're gonna get into the real fun stuff here, exciting. We're gonna get into the 2021, 2021 budget presentation.
Okay, we're all set. There are copies of the presentation on the ledge underneath the window, for those who haven't picked one up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members. Tonight, I'm gonna go through the presentation of the fiscal year 2021 budget, it's hard to believe we're here again, seems like we just did the FY '20 budget a couple of weeks ago. The budget presentation is very similar to what I've done in the past, and there's good reason for that, the information that we provide is consistent year in and year out, with the exception of many major changes to the budget, and in this particular case, there are no significant changes to the budget, to the operating budgets, a couple of changes of note that we'll go through as I move through the presentation. So the presentation contents includes a discussion of the budget process, a review of the revenues and expenditures, I'm gonna review the town and school budget, I'm gonna have a five-year budget projection that I'll review, we'll talk about future items to monitor, financial items to monitor, and then just, I like to include the Board of Select, highlights from the Board of Selectmen, financial policy. So in discussion with the first, to discuss the first item, the budget message, this is a document that I sent to departments, department heads on November 1st. The budget message is an annual message outlining to the department heads what my criteria is for budget I asked that each department submit to me their top three priorities to review, that if funding became available, that we would try to address those priorities. And each of the departments fulfill that in applying those guidelines to their budgets that they submitted. Their budgets would due November 15th. Budget review took place between November 21st and December 6th. The final budget was developed between December 10th and December 20th. And the FinCom after tonight will, as well as the board, will get copies of all those budgets and they'll start their review January 15th, which is one to two weeks earlier than we usually start the process, which is something that I wanted to do. Next, we're going to review a summary of revenues and expenditures. This is a summary of the budget and essentially how we're going to pay and other expenditures that we need to address and how we're going to pay for those. The expenditures deal with the overall town and school budget. There are some other local expenditures that we need to raise and we need to raise money for our state and county charges assessed by the Commonwealth. And then the revenues that we'll review that pay for those expenditures involve the tax levy, state aid, our local receipts, and other available funds that help fund the In regard to expenditures, this first page, this first slide gives you an idea of the appropriation under the projected budget FY '21 column. That is the FY '21 budget for the town and school. It includes all of our fixed costs. It includes our exempt and non-exempt debt and our operating and salary budgets, our capital level budgets. The budget projected for FY '21 is $121,560,466. It's an increase over the FY '20 budget in the amount of $3,759,657. Now you notice on this slide, there are other lines that are not populated at this point. The first is to transfer to enterprise funds. The reason why there's no amount of money in that line item is no longer, we are no longer obligated for debt service to, to the enterprise funds. That went away this current fiscal year, so that was good. There was a reduction in exempt debt. The remaining figures will be populated once we get closer to town meeting and we have a better understanding of the final enterprise budgets and what articles will be coming forward, financial articles that will come forward at annual town meeting. So for tonight's purposes, the only item that is on this slide is the general fund The next group of expenditures that we need to raise above and beyond the budget, the first includes the cherry sheet offsets. This is essentially money that we need to raise specifically for public libraries and we receive this money back from the Commonwealth, but we need to raise it first. That amount is $40,340. That's what we are going to receive in FY '20, so I level funded that amount. Under other local expend, other local expenditures, we need to raise money for the oval, funds for the overlay reserve in the amount of $650,000. This overlay reserve is for abatements, exemptions, and for taxes that the assessors use each year. And 650 is what was decided upon to bring forward for FY '21. This number will change once we set the tax rate. It's driven by a formula through the Department of Revenues Tax Recap Sheet. Going further down, the only other expenditure that we need to raise funds for is the teacher deferral. This is the payback of the teacher deferral that the town approved a little over eight years ago in the amount of $259,955. The town also receives a revenue benefit from this that I'll highlight further on in the presentation. FY '21, we have one more year after FY '21 to appropriate money for the teacher deferral and then we'll be done, which is also good news for the town. So the total local, other local expenditures in addition to the budget that we need to raise is $909,955. And then finally, the last expenditure that we need, need to raise funds for is for state and county charges. These are charges assessed to the town by the Commonwealth. There are items such as mosquito control, which is our, being part of the mosquito control project for our area. This assessment allows us to have mosquito spraying throughout the community at various times during the year. Private homes can call for, for spraying, various streets can call for spraying, and that's all part of the assessment that we pay. Just some of the highlights from this area, we have our regional transit authority, the LRTA assessment each year. I increased that by 10% just as a projection for $305,938. And then the biggest area here is the charter school assessment, which is the assessment for our students that go to charter school. I projected that to also increase 10% to $1,229,82. Overall, I projected a 10% increase for all of the state and county assessments. And then, once the budget's complete, completed by the Commonwealth sometime in July, we can adjust whether we need more or if they actually came in less, we can adjust those funds for other areas of the budget. In regard to revenues and how we're going to pay for those expenditures, the first item that I'll be discussing is the property tax levy, which is the largest amount of revenue that we receive in town. We refer as the property from, as, we refer to the property tax levy as simply the levy. And as you know, the levy in town is governed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, which means there's constraints on the amount of funds we can raise in a given year. The levy is projected to increase 2 and 1/2% of the previous fiscal year's levy limit as allowed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. We also will add new growth to that levy in any of the excluded debt that's been approved by the taxpayers of the community. New growth, which is part of the levy, the tax levy, is something that is discussed year in and year out. New growth is additional tax revenue generated by new construction, renovations, and other increases in property tax base during the calendar year. The additional revenue is then incorporated into the calculation of the levy limit. And just by example, new growth for FY '21 is based on new construction that occurs between January and December of 2019. In the fall of 2020, when that growth is being determined and certified by the Department of Revenue and added to the FY '21 levy limit, we use the FY '20 tax rate to calculate what that growth is. So it's all the growth in the community from January of 19 to December 31st of 19. So it's everything that's been in the books basically for the prior year. So any growth that happens from January 1st on will get added to the following year. This slide just gives you a quick snapshot on how the levy limit is determined. So for example, if the previous year's levy limit was $10 million, you would add 2 and 1/2% to that, which is $250,000. You would add your new growth to that, which for purposes of this slide, we're using $200,000. So your new levy limit for that fiscal year would be $10,450,000. If a community votes for any debt exclusion, that gets added on to the levy limit. In this case, we used $1 million. So then the property taxes levied in a community, in that particular community would be $11,450,000. And then in the following fiscal year, you would go through the same exercise. You would take the levy limit, which is the levy limit minus any debt exclusions. You would add 2 and 1/2% to that, new growth to come up with your new levy. So this just gives you an illustration of how we start determining our property tax levy each year. Just staying with new growth, this slide gives you a history of our new growth for the past, since 2011. And I like to show this slide because it gives you an indication of the fluctuation of new growth that we have had. As you can see, we've been as low as $827,297 in 2014 to a high of $2,432,232 in 2018. What's important to note about new growth, especially in the most recent years where we've had high new growth, it's been driven mostly by personal property. As you can see from this chart, we've had good residential growth, very small commercial growth, and very high personal property growth. Most of that growth, as you can see also from this slide, came from the utilities, specifically looking at FY '17, '18, and '19. You can see most of, a lot of the growth was made up of utility growth. And that's because of the work that National Grid has done in the community, specifically work to substations.
Mr. Montori, is this a, also, is this like a five-year average as well?
So then on the right-hand side, I gave an average since 2011 through 2020 and then a percentage of what each of those are of new growth, each of the categories.
So it's not an, it's a science? You're actually using formula for, for a prediction? I think we get questioned on that now. How do we come up with new growth? And it's not a sci, I mean, it's literally a science or something?
Yes, it's, it's always difficult to determine what the amount's going to be. So the chief assessor, myself, and the finance director will discuss it and we'll look at what, because it's based on what's happened in the, in development of the previous year, we can really, without looking at each building permit, we have an idea if there are any major projects or what type of development we've seen in the past year. And this past year, we've seen a completion of some major projects because of the auto dealerships and we've seen some residential growth, but nothing that we can pinpoint that says, okay, we're going to see a large amount of growth in a given year. So we, we kind of go back and review what type of development we've seen. But this gives, just gives you a history and some, and an average since then of what growth has been. And it fluctuates. So revenues for property tax, this is what we're projecting for FY '21. The levy, levy limit from the previous fiscal year was $81,546,456. When you add 2 and 1/2% to that, that's $2,386,61. We're projecting new growth to be $850,000 for a levy limit projection of $84,435,118. Then we have to add the debt exclusions that the town has voted to the levy limit and that's $12,599,161. And that gets added to the tax levy. As you can see, that's decreasing from the previous fiscal year in the amount of $414,772. That's because all of our debt is a declining debt. So we're starting to see the other end of our debt service, specifically in sewer where we reached a peak, where it was increasing. Now we're going to be seeing the other end of that. So that's good news.
Mr. Montori, just on that, as far as the, I think that's very important to highlight the debt, the debt exclusion. So we have the sewer and like you said, when, when does that, when do it really start seeing significant decreases for the residents in two years?
Probably another year or two.
Another year or two. So we have the sewer. Now, obviously, we have the big one. We have the new fire station, correct? That's in there?
So the new fire station is in there. We borrowed that funding. The new school, elementary school is in there. We borrowed funds for that. And that's all, that's all been, that started in FY '20 and we're seeing that debt to start to decrease in FY '21.
But this is pretty significant for any community. And again, it was the residents that voted. It's very important to highlight right now. We know it's high for that 12.5 million.
It, it is. When I, when I looked at what other communities have for excluded debt, we were one of the higher communities that I looked at. So it is significant.
Okay, thank you. What about Mr. Stronach?
I'd just like to say that while it is high, we are in a position where our infrastructure is in a lot better position than a lot of the other communities who have a lower debt exemption. Because this number, while it's high and does include the school and fire, the majority of this is the sewer, correct?
Yeah, the sewer, the sewer is the large majority.
So I just, you know, as we decreased that, we anticipated that that was going to happen.
Good call out, Mr. Stronach. I mean, I look across other communities and towns, you know, and every, every town has old buildings, you know what I mean? Whether it's school, fire, police, or otherwise. And I think we're in a very good position. We're going to talk about the DPW budget, how we're not going to try to take a strategy as far as make that a debt exclusion. So good call out. Although our debt exclusion is high right now, I think we're in very good shape compared to our neighboring communities. I truly mean that.
And at some point, they're going to have to make the hard decisions that we have already made.
That's correct. I think we are, we're ahead of a lot of communities and the work that we've done to our infrastructure, to our facilities. I mean, we do have more work to do, but we're in a good position. And the, the debt exclusions are high, but you know, we brought the information to the residents and they voted on it at each of these elections, so we've implemented. So the, and then just one last thing, the amortization of bond premium. We have a bond premium that each year we can use, we use a portion of that bond premium to reduce our debt exclusions. And in FY '21, the amount we're, that's being used is $55,114. So that brings the property taxes that, for the levy limit, the amount to be levied to This next slide is more of a historical review of the town's levy limit, how it's increased since 2015. Again, most of that because of debt exclusion, specifically the fire station and the school. Gives you a history of the tax rate, how it's changed over those years, both for residential and commercial, industrial, and personal property. Gives you an idea how the single-family home values, the average single-family home value has changed. In FY 2000, in 2015, the average home value was $327,145 and in FY '20, it's $433,362. So you can see the significant increase over the last, since 2015. And we give that history both for condos and commercial properties. And then the average tax bill for a single-family homes, condos, and commercial since 2015. And it was $5,355 for the average single-family home. And in FY '20, it was $6,921. Again, mostly driven because of debt exclusions that were approved. And then in the far right column, that's shaded in yellow, we did an estimate of what we believe this increase in the tax levy will be to the average single-family home. If the, just to go into more detail, the next slide really focuses in that area. If the levy is increased, $2,494,705. If all the property values remain the same, if the commercial, industrial, personal property shift remained at the 1.56 that the selectmen voted this year, the average single-family home increase in FY '21 would be $183. The average condo would increase $143 and the average commercial would increase $620, approximately 2.6%. So this is, you know, a very early projection, but we did look at it and this just gives everyone an idea of what, what the impact could be.
Just, that's what the residents always say. So a bottom line number, what's the bottom line at the end of the day? If you squeeze this budget down, the FY 2020, 2021 budget, the average tax increase, what would you say is $183?
If everything stayed the same.
I think that's super important to note. That's what the residents want to know at the end, at the end of the day. So, and most of this, outside of the debt exclusion, if you really further squeeze this budget down, the increase is typically salary. I'm not going to call it level set, but it's pretty damn close to being level set when you look around other communities as far as our biggest hitter is salary. We're also going to talk about upcoming right now, how we're trying to position the DPW station.
Correct.
Mr. Stronach?
So I appreciate the 183, but I like to deal with percentages because of some people's tax bills are higher and lower depending on their property value. So I like to use the 2.6 as my number because 183 in the, because this is based on medium income and all of that. So I just want to say, I love the 183, but if So I just want to say, I love the 183, but if you're on the high end, that's not what you're going to see. And I just like to remind, I like 2.6.
I need to calculate it for percentages, so, all right.
And even further, yeah, no, if you go back to the slide before, we break out what the tax rate could be if all things stayed the same, so someone can apply that new tax rate to their valued home and.
Yep.
Get more specific. But again, it's all preliminary. These are all estimates. And then, an exercise I went through last year, yeah, good.
I do have one other thing that I would, just out of curiosity, last year, if I'm looking at this correctly, the percentage of increase was 8.1. And part of that is driven by the debt exclusion, which is now on a downward slope and will continue to go down. So that will help us in the long run in projected years going up, is that correct?
It should, yeah, it should.
So I just want to note that for the record, because we had an increase last year. That's a big difference between last year's and this year's. And I know that, as our chairman has said, is that, you know, we keep saying to the town manager, please put the brakes on, please put the brakes on, as you like to say it. So that's reflected in here.
And just going, just going back a couple of slides, if you look at the, the property tax slide, the debt exclusion amount that we raised in FY '19 was $9,125,434. In FY '20, this current year, when we saw the over 8% increase in taxes, debt, the amount of, for debt exclusions jumped to $13,000, $13,933. So that was significant.
That's what I was referring to.
Last but not least, one more question on debt exclusion here. As far as the $13, $13 million, we talked about the school, the Sua, and the fire station. And just like folks have mortgages, sometimes we take a different mortgage out. You know, we take a 30-year mortgage on your house, as an example, to kind of stretch the payments down to actually, to exactly do that, stretch the payments down. So is there consideration right now, or potentially, that we can, let's call it, re-mortgage? Because we do have a very good bond rating in the next year or two, to even help that further?
Yes, so what we do each year, we, and we'll, for our next time, we borrow funds. We always look at any funds that we can refinance if the interest rates warrant it. There are some laws and regulations we need to abide by, but we have done that in the past and saved millions of dollars by doing that. But it's something we look at every time we do a borrowing to see if we can refinance. And if there are opportunities, we take advantage of it.
I like to strongly consider that, you know, as a future-looking out there, as a strategy. And I'm not saying kick the can down the road, but it's going to help, the residents have been burned, in a good way, as far as not, as far as paying the debt exclusion, but maybe stretch that out so, you know, down the road, future generations can absorb some of the blow and just lessen the debt exclusion, you know, for the near term, that's all.
No, and that's a good point. And it's something that, since we borrowed for the school back in June, our interest rate was around 2.4%. I've monitored how the bond market has been going, because obviously, I get concerned that, did we do the right thing? And when I last checked for the November offerings that were out there throughout the country, of our size, for a double-A community, no one has seen better than what we saw. And not only in the interest rate, but also in the bond premium that we received that day. So, you know, I think for the school and for the fire station, which had actually a better interest rate, those will probably not see any type of refinancing, but the Sua ones are always looked at. And then, lastly on this slide, again, because the last couple of years have been the biggest impact to taxes, you could see from '18 to '19, the increase in the debt exclusion amount, that was for the fire station. And then from '19 to '20 is the school, and those are on the downside.
Mr. Stronach?
And just to make another comment that adds to this, is at that time, in '18 and '19, we also saw two of our highest years of new growth, which puts into that situation.
Absolutely.
So that also compounded, because if you see in FY '20, it's almost a million dollars less than in FY '19, which was about a half a million dollars less than FY '18. And that new growth gets factored into the levy. So as our new growth declines, that 2% stays a little bit closer to two.
Two and a half percent.
Two and a half, sorry. While we're reviewing all that.
Yeah, no, those are good points. So then moving on to, continuing on to the next, to the slide after the tax impact. This is an exercise I did last year. It was, it seemed to be well-received, and looked at it again this year. Because there's always a discussion of, okay, don't increase taxes, no increase. And in order to not have a tax increase, you essentially have to not increase the levy to $2,494,705. And if you do that, you're going to reduce both the town and school budgets. And if you look at the recommended budget of $121,560,466, 54.1 of it is tied up in salaries for town and school. If you reduce that by the 2.4 million, you're talking layoffs and reductions in service. And then further, if you look at the town and school operating, including Shawsheen, Essex Aggie, Capital Outlay, and Unclassified, that makes up $67.3 million of the recommended budget. And of that amount, I'll show you in the next slide, how 61.6 of it really is difficult to cut. And that would leave $5.7 million of discretionary funds that could potentially be cut to achieve no, a no-tax increase. But producing that 5.7 would really impact education, public safety, and the overall delivery of service. Now, looking at that amount of money that I was talking about, you know, that really can't be cut, these are a list of areas of the budget that really should not, or could not, cannot be touched, you know. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but when you look at the first two, snow and ice, solid waste budget, you look at the streetlights, you go down the line to veterans' benefits, elections, debt, our workers' comp funding, utilities, you know, you need to, you have the utilities for all of our buildings. Going down further, you have the Shawsheen Tech, the Essex Aggie assessment, building maintenance in our schools, which has been a concern, facilities maintenance in our own building, our town buildings, which people constantly talk about, we need to maintain our buildings, don't let them go like we've done in the past, technology contracts, for schools, transportation for the schools. So this is a line item, how we get to the $61.6 million of items that really are difficult to cut. And it just also highlights that this budget that we're presenting, or are presenting, is truly a level-service budget. There are no frills or luxuries in this budget that would cause someone concerned that we're out-of-control spending. So I think this, these slides highlight that. And then this next slide just gives you an indication, because I know there are concerns about taxes, where we stand with about 15 communities that I pulled, that we've used in the past as a comparable towns to look at, ones that abut us, ones that go a little bit further down Route 93, others that go further out on Route 495. I'm sure there's many more you can pull in, but this gives you an idea where we stand in regard to our average tax bill for fiscal year 2020. The next area of revenues, any other questions on taxes before I move off of that? Another area of revenue, in addition to property taxes, is state aid. This is our next largest amount of revenue that we receive. I projected level funding for state aid in the amount of $17,9744. Typically, level fund this amount, and we don't adjust until we see the final numbers when the conference committee addresses the final state budget in July. The governor typically comes out with a budget that has higher state aid figures than the, than the House or the Senate, and then they each adjust as they go along, both adjusting state aid and our state and county charges. Now, the one thing we're going to watch carefully this year when it comes to state aid, is the new, recently passed Student Opportunity Act. The Department of Revenue is projecting, we've seen projections of the town losing funds, receiving funds, we haven't seen the final numbers yet, and no one seems to want to send them to us, so. And then, the Department of Revenue has projected slower growth in FY '21, so we're going to watch that. So the safest bet right now is to level fund state aid, and we'll see how we are in July, and we can always adjust down the road.
Mr. Mottori, this does not include Chapter 90, because that's given, we don't have to level set.
Correct, Chapter 90 is totally separate.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Local receipts is the next area of funding that we receive. These are all local revenues that the town generates through a variety of areas, the largest being our motor vehicle excise tax. This year, for FY '21, I'm projecting an increase of $542,121 over the FY '20 projection, although it's still less than what we actually took in in FY '19 for very good reasons, which I'll go through in a minute. But this is an area that is locally driven, and these are just, these are revenues that we receive, not through the state, or we get them at the, we generate them at the local level. Going into more detail, the first is motor vehicle excise tax. We're projecting an increase over FY '20 of $156,193. Even though it's less than FY '19's actual received, the projection for motor vehicle excise is based on a five-year projection of actual collections from '15 to '19. And motor vehicle excise is essentially $25 per thousand on the vehicle value of residents in the community. The next is a mail tax that we assess in the community. The town voted to assess a mail tax in 2011, increasing it from 6.25% to 7%. The mail tax that we're projecting in FY '21 is based on another five-year projection, similar to motor vehicle excise. It's an increase over what was projected in FY '20, and it's slightly lower than what was actually collected in '19. Hotel motel tax, this was an interesting revenue that we looked at, a projection that we had for this year. The hotel motel tax was adopted by the community, and again, 2011, we assessed a 6% hotel motel tax on the hotels in the community. The projection is based on an average of FY '15 through '18. I did not include FY '19 in the, in the average, because FY '19 truly was a unique year. Because of the Columbia gas incident in Lawrence, our hotels saw a spike in occupancy. That, when I spoke to one of the hotels, they said that that was unique, and they will see very flat growth going forward. So for the projections, I took out FY '19 and just used FY '15 through '18. The increase is $48,000 higher than what I projected for FY '20, but it's obviously less than what was taken in in FY '19. The next is other excise tax, which is for boat excise, this is a minor amount. There are a few residents in town that have a boat that receives an excise, did a five-year average FY '15 through '19. Penalties and interest, these are charges assessed to late payments on taxes and fees in accordance with mass general law. Because these fluctuate so much in a given year, as you can see from these numbers, and actually, they've been going down over the last few years, I just took the actual collected in FY '19 and did 90% of that actual collection for a projection for FY '21, because the five-year average just wasn't realistic.
Mr. Mottori, I think we're good there. One question as far as the new regional dispatch center?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know we're going to get some revenues, it's not earth-shattering, when would the new, when would those revenues be accounted for? Would they be accounted for local receipts?
No, they'll go right to the regional district. So the regional district budget is approximately, and this will be given out when I give the detailed budgets, but the regional budget is a little over $1.9 million. We're projecting to receive grants and revenue from the Commonwealth in the amount of $1,27,982. That'll go directly to the center. And then the center will be assessed back to Drake and Tewksbury, $925,150, of which Tewksbury is responsible for 53%, and Drake is responsible for 47%. So that revenue will go to the, to the center, and then they'll charge us back the net amount needed.
Okay, but the bottom line, I mean, there is profitability there for the regional dispatch center?
Definitely.
Okay. And I'm going to use this time, I'm going to give a shout out to Mr. Chief Hazel, you've done an unbelievable job. Mr. Mottori keeps us informed, trying to get the regional center up. We know we're going to stay on for another year, so we can't thank you enough, we know you're doing a ton of work there, so thank you very much.
I saw him driving the truck this morning.
All right, I'm sorry.
He does it all!
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moving on, the next revenue is a payment lieu of taxes that we receive, mostly from the Housing Authority. This amount is projected based on the actual amounts that we should receive from the Housing Authority FY '21. This was one of those revenues we received in FY '19, similar to the hotel motel tax that was unique. We received $210,378 in FY '19, because the Housing Authority had owed us tax payments for Delaney Drive Housing Complex from previous years, that they finally made up that payment in FY '19. We're not going to see those type of payments again, we'll go back to what is owed to us per the agreements, which we're projecting to be $15,997. Ambulance charges, these are the fees that we use for ambulance service in the community. We use Medicare allowable rates as a base. Tewksbury rates are 250% over the 2019 Medicare allowable rates. The projection is based on a five-year average of what we've collected for ambulance service. Fees, these are fees charged by the departments for services, such as police detail administration fees, sailor weights and measures, fire inspections, et cetera. The amount that I'm projecting in FY '20 is based on FY '15 and '16, because in FY '19, actually, I'm just going to go back, in FY '15 and '16, in those amounts were cable fees. So that was unique. And in FY '19, the actual collection was high because of a strike detail that we had for National Grid, which gave us more police detail administration funds. So the projection for FY '21 is based on, fees is based on 90% of FY '17, which is one of the more realistic years we had, 90% of that actual collected. And again, '15, '16, '19 were unique years. Rentals, these are the, this fee, this revenue is generated by wireless carriers, rental cell towers that are on town property. The amount that we're projecting is based on what the actual collection should be for those rentals. And we're renewing some of those leases soon, and we're not sure if they're going to be at the same level they currently are at, but we'll monitor this closely. Other departmental revenue, there's no projection for FY '21, since the amounts previously collected have been reclassified throughout our local receipts. License and permits, fees charged by, these are fees charged by departments for various license and permits, permits such as liquor licenses, building, electrical, plumbing, and gas permits, DPW permits, border health food establishment permits. And this was a revenue that we took a hard look at, because it fluctuates so much depending on the particular year for development. In FY '19, we saw a high year for development because of Raytheon's expansion into other buildings in the community where they did a large fit-up. We had L3 Communications going in up off of Route 133. We had car dealerships pulling large building permits for their expansions. So I went through each individual fee in this category and applied a three, four, or five-year average to those fees, depending on the fee. I pulled out the unique building permits in years for FY '19, '17, and '16, when we saw the large apartment complexes, and that's how we came up with the projection for FY '21. So we looked at each individual license and permit category under this, under this Fines and forfeits, this is parking fines, library fines, court fines, zoning fines. court fines, zoning fines. And for this particular one, we did a two-year average of FY '15 and FY '19, which were the most consistent years for collections. This is an area we're gonna monitor closely because we feel that we're gonna start to see a reduction in this area. We had a lengthy discussion about this area because our library fines are higher than we've seen, than our finance director had seen in previous towns. We anticipate those going down because of automatic renewal of books. So those fines will start to be reduced. We collect about $17,000 a year in library fines. And then there was a discussion of, in the future, should we be charging library fines? So their revenue could go away. So it was safe to keep this at the average of '15 and '19 and we'll monitor it as we go along. Interest earnings, this is an area that fluctuates greatly. In FY '19, we've had a fair amount of cash on hand to gain interest earnings. And as we know, interest rates have been declining, so we based this on a three-year average of FY '15 through '17. Miscellaneous state and other revenue, there's no projection here since there's been no revenue collected. Medicaid reimbursement, which is revenue from the federal government for providing medically necessary Medicaid services to eligible mass health enrolled children. This greatly fluctuates each year, so for this projection, I took 90% of what we collected in FY '19. And as you can see from the numbers, we've been as low as $69,243 in 2015 to as high as $368,803. So a five-year average wasn't realistic. And then the last two revenues, recurring revenue, which is from things like tax title or municipal lien certificates, deferred real estate taxes. We don't make any projections for this revenue because we truly don't know if it's gonna be reliable. For non-recurring revenue, this is revenue that we receive from grants that come in after the fiscal year is closed and any other reimbursements for special Medicaid. The department of revenue frowns on both of these having projections because of their, they're not reliable, so we don't project any revenue for these areas. And then this next slide gives you an idea of what, if we did a five, four, in red, you'll see a five, four, and three-year average of local receipts if we did not adjust for any unique revenues. And then in blue, you see a five, four, and three-year average if we adjusted for the non-recurring and reoccurring revenues and took out our cable fees in FY '15 and '16. And as you can see, the revenue projection for FY '21 is not that far off from what these averages, especially in blue, are. And, you know, 6% to 10% is a good cushion to have for any of these revenue projections. Any questions on the local receipts? And then finally, the last revenue is other, other available funds and this is where we receive the benefit from the school deferral, salary deferral, and approximately $173,000. This next slide is just a graph of the biggest, what the revenue slices look like. Not a huge change from FY '20 to '21 in any one of these categories. As you can see, property taxes make up close to 78% of all the revenue we have in the community. This next slide is a summary of both the revenues and expenditures. The total amount that we need to raise in FY '21 is $124.2 million and we have enough revenue to balance the budget to pay for that, those expenditures. Any questions before I go into the budget? So the FY '21 budget starts each year by looking at the new revenue that we will have available for both the town and the school. And this slide gives you an idea of the revenue split between both. And it starts with the total gross revenue that is available, which was $4,159,680. This amount, from this amount, I took off $1.3 million to be set aside for debt service for the new, for a new DPW school facility. Then I take off what we project for an increase in Shawshene Tech. That projection is actually 6%, not 8%, I need to change that. And then Essex Aggie, actually, there won't be an increase, there won't be an increase, it's actually a decrease of $143. I'll make those corrections for the next, when I put it up on the web. The, that left $2,464,187 to be split between the town and the school. School would get 60% of that net revenue and the town would get 40% of that net revenue. And then when you go down the list, you can see where the fixed costs impact the, the amount of revenue that the town and school get. And the school side, they'll see a decrease in their health insurance. They'll see an increase in their retirement, that I'll go through further on. They'll see an increase in their Medicare tax and in their property and liability insurance. The town will see an increase in their health insurance costs, an increase in their retirement costs, about 2.8%. Their Medicare tax will increase and their property liability will increase. When you take out all the fixed costs that I mentioned, the net amount that the school had for their operating budget was $1,445,239 and the town had $632,900.
Mr. Chairman, just had a quick question on the Shaw Tech increase. So that percent, that 8% increase?
It's really 6%, that's a.
Oh, 6%? That's 6% from last year?
6% over last year's assessment.
And that's due to enrollment?
It's due to enrollment and that's just in discussions with the acting superintendent and what she's looking at right now, based on enrollment and based on what they're gonna get for state aid and how she thinks it's gonna shake out. I'll know better at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Can I piggyback on Mr. Dick's question? The School Opportunity Act could also impact that number, correct?
It could. It's gonna impact state aid, which impacts that number. The formula's complicated, it deals with their state aid, our state aid, our enrollment, their enrollment. So, absolutely.
I think that regional schools are potentially looking at being in a better position than maybe suburban schools with that act. I'm not sure if that's true enough, but.
Yeah, again, we've had no information, so it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
This next slide is just a summary of the town and school budgets, how much they've increased without exempt debt. The town budget will increase $2,285,676, but within that number is $1.3 million of debt service for the town school maintenance facility. Exempt debt, as we talked about earlier, on the town side decreased. The school budget, as I mentioned, will increase $1.4 million and the, their exempt debt will decrease $112,000. Shaw Tech, again, will increase $395,636. This next slide just gives you a graph of how the money is broken up. School budget, 50.69% of the budget, town 32.5% of the budget. Shawshene Tech, 5.7% of the budget. Exempt debt for the school is 6.1% and for the town, it's 4.2% of the overall budget. Further breaking this down into more detail, salaries in FY '20 will make up 44% of the overall town budget for town and school, operating 18.3%, exempt debt 10.36%, health insurance 10.4%, retirement 6.8%. So this just gives you an indication of where the money from a percentage standpoint is tied up in the overall budget. This next slide focuses mainly on the town budget. The increase of $1,997,738, this is without exempt debt. The number I gave you earlier had exempt debt in it. And within this number, again, is $1.3 million for the town and school maintenance facility. And this just gives you every category of the budget, where it saw increases and decreases, both for salary and operating. And as the chairman mentioned earlier, a lot of this is driven by salary.
Which is contractual.
Which is all contractual. This next set of graphs gives you a comparison of FY '20 and '21 of the town's general fund budget, how it's broken up between salary and operating, exempt debt and retirement. The reason for the decrease in the percentage in salary is because we moved the dispatchers out of the police budget and moved them over to the Northern Middlesex Regional Communication Center. And then this just breaks it down even further by department, between police, fire, DPW. And again, police saw a decrease in their percentage because of the dispatchers being moved out, but everyone else stayed fairly consistent. And then just going into more detail on the salary increase. Salary increase showed a net decrease of $84,368, mainly because, if you look at the slide, $608,386 was because of the dispatchers being moved out to the regional center. We did see an increase of approximately $365,000 for cost of living increases, which on average are 2.25%. Any step increases, longevity changes, and other contractual obligations. We have adjustments because we've hired new people filling vacancy for retirees that came in salaries less than the person that retired. We're adding desk clerks to the police department. That's projected to be $122,931. And then in the elections area, there's an increase there of $44,650 and that's because of the number of elections we have in FY '21. We have a state primary, a national election, and then the local election. Plus, there was an increase in the minimum wage that drove up the hourly pay for the election workers. On the operating side, there was an increase of $718,594. Here's a list of the areas that saw some of the major increases. We haven't gone through them in detail. The biggest one, obviously, is the Northern Middlesex Regional Emergency Communication Center, that's $490,809 of that increase. We saw an increase in general government because our computer services department had an increase because it took over the microwave network and the cost of antivirus software going into FY '21. Elections also saw an increase in the general government area because of the number of elections next year. Just looking at some of the other major ones. Police department increase of $115,000. In operating included $81,856 for computer and network administration. That previously was a salaried employee that was moved out of salaries and now we contract that out, so you saw a reduction in salaries, but an increase in their operating. And then $27,166 for the second-year contract of the new tasers for the department that the old tasers were out of warranty. So those were some of the major areas in the department operating budget. But the one I wanna highlight is at the bottom, solid waste collection and disposal, $83,817. That's due to a 3% increase in the solid waste and recycling contract that we have at Republic Services. And then a 3.75% increase in solid waste disposal costs, totaling $44,147. This is a cost that in FY '22 will see a major increase. Right now, we pay approximately, we're projected, we're gonna pay $75 a ton in FY '21 and all indications are that we're gonna pay at a minimum $90 a ton come FY '22. That'll be an increase of $150,000 to $180,000 just to dispose of our trash. A couple of years after that, when our solid waste and recycling service contract is up for renewal with Republic Services, I anticipate that seeing a large increase also because of the cost of recycling to communities, to the providers. So solid waste collection and disposal is an area that starting in FY '22, we should see significant increases too.
I just have a question, can you repeat the year for the recycling, FY '22?
FY '22 for disposal, either FY '23 or '24 for the actual contract. We're part of a seven-town group that negotiates solid waste disposal. We have met with the vendor that takes out solid waste. We've met with the company that services our solid waste and recycling and all indications are that these costs are going to increase and we need to start thinking about that and preparing for it. And we've met with the state and the state is not providing any relief, so.
This is not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. This is not unique to Tewksbury and this is something similar to Stormwater that we have been ringing the bell on for a couple of years now. I mean, Stormwater's been more than a couple of years, but we've been ringing the bell on this and it's gonna come to roost next year and the year after that or maybe one year early.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Some towns are starting to see the impact now. We're still under contract with our disposal facility. It's to be, you know, $75 in FY '21. We're fortunate that in the current contract that we have with Republic Services for our recycling and trash, that we capped the cost of disposing or servicing recycling at $60 a ton. Other, some towns are paying $105 a ton, so.
So we just got lucky.
Well, I'd like to think we're smart also.
Just one final point, this might seem like a little thing, but this is actually a real big thing coming up and I'm glad you're trying to be proactive with the coalition. You know, I like to engage our representatives and our state representative here. This one seems, you know, we're asked to do recycling and do all the right things, yet at the end of the day, our costs could almost double, triple, it'll be 10 times the cost of today for doing the right thing. So if the state's not gonna step up, I'd ask if, kinda, we have a partnership with our coalition and say, what can we do? We wanna do the right thing, you know, but if it's gonna cost us a ton of dough and significant dollars.
And part of the problem is recycling markets have dried up. So recycling, recycling costs have increased to service them and find markets for them. On the solid waste disposal side, hundreds of thousands of tons of trash have been displaced because landfills have closed throughout the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth has done nothing to provide for other options for communities. No new, no new incinerators have been permitted, no new landfills have been permitted. They've, they've stressed sending trash out on reel to other states that will take it. That's not realistic. They've talked about trying to encourage towns to charge a fee for trash, which is not realistic. Recycling of organics, which means recycling of food waste, which is another difficult area. So the Commonwealth really hasn't done much to help us, so we're gonna have to just prepare for this. And just one other note, especially in the operating budget. When we, you know, we came forward this past fall for a Stormwater Enterprise Fund that we will be bringing forward in a few weeks to the board. We told town meeting, we told the board that within the DPW budget, there were funds in those, in that budget for Stormwater. And then within this budget, obviously, those funds are still there and will go towards Stormwater. So those were maintained, which was important as we developed the budget. But there's, any new Stormwater initiatives or costs are in the, will be in the Stormwater Enterprise Budget that we'll bring forward. And again, just to prepare everyone, we will be recommending a fee of $75 to address not only the operating budget in the Enterprise Fund, but also capital improvement projects that we will bring forward for Stormwater. Then finally, for the town side, looking at the unclassified budgets, which are, which are fixed costs, those increased $1.5 million, mainly in the area of non-exempt debt service, which was where I put the DPW in school facility debt service. As I mentioned, health insurance will increase on the town side, $128,059. Our premiums for medics, health, and dental. Our premiums for medics, health and dental are projected not to increase. The increase really is the enrollment that we're going to see next year. We have people retiring, and those people that retire stay on health insurance, but the new people take a plan, so we need to factor that in. We're also starting to factor in both the town and school health insurance. We have individuals who work for the community who are under 26 years old, who are on their parents' plans, and we need to stop projecting that they will turn 26 and come off their parents' plans and come on our plan. So we've planned for that in both the town and school health insurance budgets. Retirement's increasing around 2.5%, $165,000 based on the assessment for Middlesex. Property and liability insurance, 6% based on what Meyer has told us. And Medicare tax as a function of payroll, which is increasing 2.6%. Capital outlay will increase $64,235. There are some very specific areas that saw increases to capital outlay. The first being the senior center, $5,051 for new chairs for the meteor room, $55,184 for the police department for equipment and building improvements, and $15,000 for DPW fleet maintenance upgrades for trucks for snow and ice operations. And then finally, on the town budget, allocations increased $31,013. And then, as you can see, the breakout, water decreased by $562. We saw an increase in sewer enterprise fund of $13,224. And cable, $12,252 for, and this is almost like a revenue to the town because allocations offset some of the costs within the budget. So that's the town budget. This one next slide I wanted to focus on because we've talked a lot tonight about the DPW facility and the $1.3 million in debt service that's been set aside. And there's been questions about how this is going to be funded, where it's going to be funded, is it going to be funded? Are we being realistic? So I just want to walk everyone through this slide. And the first is, the estimated cost of the project is $27.3 million. Now, that's a very high-level estimate based on a needs assessment that was done. The design OPM through bidding was funded at special town meeting 2019 in the amounts of $2.2 million. So the remaining amount that we would need for the projected cost of $25.1 million, which would be for construction, design administration and OPM, is $25.1 million. The plan is to get that $25.1 million down as much as we can so we don't have to borrow, so we can borrow as little as we have to for the project. And the current plan is to use, in the fall, to use reserves that we have available, whether it's free cash, stabilization fund, water and sewer retained earnings, funds within the overlay reserve that are available, to hopefully use approximately $5.1 million to get the cost of the project down to, to get the cost needed to borrow for the project down to $20 million. If we do that, and that's our goal, then the amount estimated to borrow for debt service on that borrowing is $1,750,000. That $1,750,000 is based on an interest rate of 3.75%, which is what our financial advisors told us to project as an interest rate next year. The debt service will be paid for by the $1.3 million set aside within the general fund budget, town budget, non-exempt debt service. The remaining funds will come from sewer enterprise debt service and water enterprise debt service that I'll bring forward in a couple of weeks when I present the water and sewer enterprise funds. And the reason why we're going to use water and sewer enterprise funds for debt service as well as their retained earnings is because each of them are approximately utilized 19% of the building. So between the two of them, it's about 38% of the building is for water and sewer. So it would make sense that those funds and their funds assist in paying for the building. So this is how we plan to pay for the DPW and school facility. The funds for the general fund are in this budget, so it's not something we need to think about going into fall town meeting. It's all within the tax levy limit. We're not asking for a debt exclusion to increase taxes above that $183 that we're projecting next year. This is something that was a goal within this year's budget, and that's why we held apartments to level service. And we're able to fund the project within the levy limit without needing the debt exclusion. And if funds become available after July 1st because of new growth or because of additional state aid, we can increase that $1.3 million and maybe put less of a burden on the enterprise funds. We can adjust however we think, maybe get the funding down below $20 million, which will help debt service. But this is what, this is the plan that we have in front of us right now that we're looking, looking at. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Questions on this one? I know this was a big one. Mr. Dronik?
I don't have a question as much as I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. And I think that, looking at the presentation overall, it's pretty amazing where we are now compared to many moons ago. And to be able to put forward a realistic solution to this problem that is not going back to the ballot for exempt so that our debt will continue to go down from that 13 to 12 to, you know, whatever it's going to be next year, going, taking that down with trend, is pretty impressive that the town manager and his team have been able to put this together. And in terms of using the two enterprise funds, I think that is completely appropriate use of those resources, in my humble opinion. I would like to have weigh-in from the finance committee, obviously, about how they feel about that. But you have, we have asked the town manager to put the brakes on, you know, exempt spending and come up with a solution, especially since our residents were not able to say, we want a new school, we want a new DPW. I mean, this was one of the things that got left off the wish list and, but it's not something that we can ignore because, as we all know, it is absolutely necessary. So I just want to commend the town manager and his team. And you're giving shout-outs tonight. I would also like to give a shout-out to Ron Farino and his work that he's done on the budget. Because this is a lot of work.
If I can, may I, Mr. Chairman, just quickly? You know, it's important to note that when we went to town meeting in October and asked for the $2.2 million for the design and OPM, in the handout at town meeting and in the explanation that was given, whether it was myself talking on the issue, we stated in writing that the $25 million, $25.1 million estimate was a high-level programmatic estimate. We said in writing that the plan was to fund the future construction by utilizing existing general fund and water and sewer enterprise fund accounts and revenues. And the goal was to fund the project without a debt exclusion in the future. So we laid this out. This is, what I'm laying out here is what we laid out, you know, in general terms at town meeting. So we've been consistent with that, and the only difference right now is, as I mentioned at town meeting, we won't know until we keep going further into the budget. But as of this point, as we're, as I'm presenting the budget, it looks like we're going to be able to achieve that goal unless something dramatic happens over the next, you know, six to eight months.
Any other comments?
Comments? A little groggy because of the, being in the dock, but. I mean, it's very riveting. The budget's very exciting.
You fall asleep over there, so to say?
So I was all in favor of this when our DPW director came before us and was thinking about putting a Band-Aid on a pig. And I didn't want to do that. I didn't think that was the smart thing to do. So I was all in favor of this. I'm glad the town manager was able to put this in the budget and going forward for the next, I guess, 20 years, to be able to fund this within and not do that debt exemption. You know, we did the right thing when we went before town meeting and as the town manager said, and it was voted on. It was tight, a tight vote. It was October town meeting, so that'll be interesting next town meeting to see where we fall. But a couple of quick questions. Mr. Montori, will you be borrowing the entire amount now because of the interest rates or will you be waiting?
You know, we determined that, yeah. So each, each borrowing, we look at differently. When, you know, the last few borrowings, we borrowed all the money that we needed for the projects. We did that with the high school because interest rates were favorable. We did that with the fire station. We did that with the elementary school. So it's going to depend on where interest rates are. If they remain where they are and they're favorable, we'll borrow all 20 million.
Okay. I agree with what you've said and Mr. Dronik about the sewer enterprise and the water enterprise, since they use a percentage of the building. Makes sense to use some of that money. The other thing that we haven't really mentioned or mentioned briefly is it create, it solves a problem with the schools on the maintenance side of the house. So right now, we don't, we're doing a brand-new elementary school, and that's going to dislodge the maintenance department for that. So you're calling it DPW school maintenance facility. I like consolidating facilities. Makes a good, it's a good business sense decision, and I think good for the town. I don't know if you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, so if, from our standpoint, we saw an opportunity where there obviously is a need for the DPW facility to be upgraded. But the schools is, you know, came forward as something even as important, if not more important, because they have no way to go. They're going to be displaced actually sooner than later, and they'll need temporary space. So we saw an opportunity to address two problems at once, consolidate a facility and consolidate the operations of that facility, meaning the cost of utilities, cost of maintenance of that facility into, from two facilities into one, which made sense. So, you know, that was just an opportunity that, you know, we looked at and said, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be doing two separate facilities. They both have similar needs. So, and we have the space to do it. And just one last thing, it's important to note that, you know, we recently hired an OPM for the project, PMA Consultants. We went through an interview process of the firms, and the schools have been involved in every step of the way, and they'll be involved in every step of the way of not only, as they were for the OPM decision, but go out to solicit designer proposals, what the building's going to look like when we construct it, the needs of the building. So this is just going to be, as everything is with the schools, another example of a great partnership we have with them.
And the wash bay.
And the wash bay is going to be for everybody, for the fire, for the police, for the DPW, for the schools. It's going to extend the life of our vehicles, provide more safety for our staff, you know, you can go on and on.
Two quick, quick questions. Taking money from the water and the sewer, do you anticipate? I know that's kind of putting you on the spot, but I'm thinking rates might be going up a little bit this year. But, I mean, do you feel taking the money can hit those rates even higher? What do you think?
It's hard to say at this point. I mean, we're going to, the focus has been on the general fund over the last few weeks. We started looking at water and sewer, and everything with water and sewer is driven by consumption and what we saw for consumption over the past couple of, over the past year. Not as much use as we thought, but budgets have been adjusted, debt service is adjusting in both those areas. So we may see an opportunity to not see as big an impact because of this. But, you know, my goal is to minimize the impact to the water and sewer as much as possible, and that's why I said if available, if other funds become available, that we can reduce that 20 million further. That helps the enterprise funds. If other general fund money becomes available after July 1st, I'd increase this 1.3 to something further so we don't increase the water and sewer rates.
You don't have to take money from those funds.
Right, we just adjust, right.
The last quick question is, so the 1.7 million, 1,000, 1,750, every year that goes down.
That'll be a declining, declining debt. And I, and if I'm looking at it, what I would think about doing is, you know, the 1.3 is built into the general fund budget. There's no reason why that can't stay there for a few years like that and see a bigger decline in the water and sewer side.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? I love this idea. I know we're going to have some detractors that are going to be saying, why couldn't we take this money instead of putting it toward the DPW and cut the water rates or cut the sewer rates? Certain things, they're going to, there's always some idea of how best we could spend the money. And I agree with people. I mean, taxes are rising. I know people are upset with that. But you also don't kick the can down the road too hard. I mean, you don't go and buy a brand-new snowblower and bring it home and leave it out in the rain. The DPW is in pretty bad shape. We've been asking them to do the best they can for years, and people are asking us, you know, why can't we just wait longer to do that? Can't wait any longer on certain things. I know we've got a lot of debt. I know we got a new school. We got a whole bunch of new things that are coming on. But, you know, if we have something that's in our budget that we can handle, I think this is a great idea without trying to raise taxes as other residents. It's a money well-spent. You know, we're putting in, residents are asking us for different services. They're asking us for new sidewalks. They're asking us to do, give us more services to this town. You've got to maintain those services as well. If you don't have a place to put the equipment and maintain the equipment, wash the equipment, clean the things, and you've got a building that's falling apart, sorry, it just, it just doesn't make fiscal sense to me. I mean, every year, we come forward and we look at these budgets, and I don't know how many times I look at there, and there's a, we're going to buy, you know, $100,000 for our new truck or, you know, $200,000 for this piece of equipment or that. I mean, just a couple of years ago, when we had the bad storms, luckily, the last two years haven't been too bad. I don't think we're going to get that far. But, no, but it's, we've had a piece of equipment that broke down, and then we had to rent the piece of equipment. We had to get another piece of, well, the reason those things are happening is because they're doing the best they can with what they have. But something's not properly maintained, oiled, lubricated, taken care of, stored properly. It's just, you know, you can't ask somebody to cover everything in plastic and leave it out. There's certain things that you have to maintain. And the DPW has asked for services year after year after year, and they've been pushed off. I understand the schools were a priority, seniors were a priority, and those are the type of things that we should be prioritizing. But eventually, you know, if you want somebody to do the job for you, you have to give them, you have to give them something. You have to give them the tools to be able to service us. And that's, I don't hear any resident saying they want less services from them. And so far, you know, we've got the pothole patching, paving, pavement markings, saltings, cleaning sidewalks. They're going nonstop, these people, and they're doing a great job. And I think it's time to try to take care of the people that are working for us, give them, you know, a safe working environment. I don't like spending money as much as anybody else, but sometimes it's a, you've got to spend the money to maintain what you already have and take care of the things. So I think this is a great plan. I commend the town manager, our finance department. This is a great plan, and I love the way it's put together, so thank you.
And that's why I wanted to, on the board, this was an important topic here. So I was a pretty, I was a tough critic, I guess. I would say the word critic, only in the fact that we have debt exclusion for the fire station, sewer and elementary school. So I always say I'm a betting man. I think if we put this in front of the voters, I don't think it would pass right now. It's like doing, I always love analogies. You're doing your kitchen over, your bathroom over, your bedroom over. How many rooms can you do at once? And I know we need a new DPW. Let's just, for the record, the place is absolutely, it's not in good condition. We took a tour, Mr. Montori, we've been in there, so we need it. So we asked for an alternative to get creative, and that's exactly what you did here, where we're trying to stay within the budget. So to Mr. Cr, to all our points here, this was getting creative and not saying, you know, to the taxpayers, can we have another debt exclusion? And that's, that was big right now because we talked about debt exclusion, debt exclusion a lot tonight because it's such a big number. You know, we haven't even put a shovel in the ground for the fire station or the elementary school. So there's always that unknown cost. So we asked to get creative as, as, as department heads to kind of put the brakes on, get creative to kind of say, how do we squeeze this within the budget? And you guys, that's exactly what you did. So very commendable, very good stuff, and I can't, I can't thank you enough. I mean, this is, you know, you got very creative, and I know this is a tough one here because there's a lot of dollars involved, but it's a sound plan and a sound strategy, and I thank you and the team for that.
Thank you. Just a few more slides and apologize for the length. So as we normally do each year, we just want to show the highlights of the priorities not funded. So we always keep them on our radar in case additional funding becomes available. Additional staffing and operating funds for the DPW to maintain roads, sidewalks, trees and drainages is something that is high on the priority list. Staffing in the highway department particularly needs to be addressed over the next couple of years. The police chief, although we added a school resource officer in the FY 21 budget that the schools will be funding a large portion of, he, the, the police chief would like to see another school resource officer added beyond the one we're adding for the elementary schools. schools, but we were unable to do that. Additional overtime funding for the police department and the fire department are always on our list, specifically in the fire department, to operate a third ambulance more often than we do. Seek additional funding in the future for the council on aging to fund van drivers within the budget and not have to impact grants. Funding for the council on aging for a part-time transportation coordinator, again, because of the transportation needs in the department, a coordinator in the future would be needed. Additional staffing and operating each year for the school department is something that we can always use funding for, and then, obviously, whether it's through current reserves that we have, whether stabilization fund or raising appropriate in the operating budget, the funding of town, the school capital projects, vehicles, equipment, that we just have the long laundry list of things to do. Just quickly on the school budget, the school budget is going to see an increase of $1,478,512. $744,768 will be in salaries, there are no new positions in the budget, this takes care of cost of living increases, longevity step increases, and other contractual obligations. Operating budget will increase $799,348. The capital level outlay budget will decrease $98,877, and their fixed costs such as health insurance, retirement, and liability insurance, and Medicare tax that we talked about earlier will increase $33,273. We talked about Shaw Sheen Tech and Essex Aggie earlier going, and their impact on the school specifically. I really want to commend the superintendent, the business manager on the budget that they presented at this point. I know they still have a ways to go because they need to go through the public hearing process with the school committee, but the budget that they've developed and they put together really not only addresses FY21, but I believe it sets the school department, school administration, and the education in this town for the future, and they should be commended for that. They've not been short-sighted, they've looked long-term, and I think this budget will be a budget that sets us up for the future, so they really should be commended for that. And the cooperation between the superintendent and the business manager has been excellent, as well as the school committee, so I want to thank them for all of that and look forward to that continuing in the future. This just gives you a breakdown of the school budget percentages, not too much different than the towns, most of it's in salaries. Exempt debt is a large portion of the overall budget, operating, health insurance, this just gives you an indication where the dollars are spent. This next slide is a slide I show each year, and I always want to caution people that it's just projections. This is a five-year projection where we could be out to 2026, believe it or not. It looks like based on certain assumptions that we use for our expenditures and our revenues, and they're only assumptions, I never want to be tied to this, I think going out one to two years is difficult enough, but we should be stable over the next five years to not need any major adjustments to our revenue, meaning any overrides. We'll see how our fixed costs are addressed as we move forward, as I said, solid waste will be an issue that we'll need to address, but right now, this is where we are looking at a very high level, 30,000, 100,000 for level of five-year projection for the town. And then again, I just want to stress some of the financial items to monitor in the future. State aid and state and county charges is something we're going to continually monitor, and we've been very fortunate over the past few years to receive additional state aid, our state and county charges have not hit the 10% increase threshold, so that's all been good, but that could change depending on the economy and depending on any legislation that changes, specifically the new education bill that we talked about. Federal budget, federal requirement changes, you know, we see that constantly changing. There are going to be new requirements for drinking water, there are going to be new requirements, obviously, we're dealing with stormwater in our enterprise fund, you know, just monitoring what the federal budget is doing from more requirements or cuts that will impact us, solid waste and recycling costs I mentioned, Shaw Sheen Tech assessment, we constantly monitor as we're projecting a 6% increase this year, but we saw a little bit higher than that in previous years. Unfunded liabilities like retirement, this year, we saw only a 2.2 and 1/2% increase in our retirement assessment on the town side, and that was mainly because we saw an early retirement incentive go away, but they're going to be doing new value, they're going to be doing a new valuation of our retirement assessment over the next year, so we should probably see a bump in that. OPEB, we budgeted $650,000 in the general fund, that's been consistent for the last few years, we need to eat away at that underfund liability. The stabilization fund, we'll be using some of that this year to address capital projects. We want to make sure we continually replace the stabilization fund to stay at 5%. Right now, we're a little bit below that, but if you look at the FY21 budget, we should be at 6.7 million, so we're below that at the moment. Capital improvements such as roads, sidewalk, drainage, and buildings are always on our radar screen to not only do from existing reserves, but also within the general fund budgets themselves. And then finally, we've always have increasing our bond rating from AA+ to a AAA, just because it shows the health of the community. And then this final slide, I like to put in just the financial highlights of the financial policy of the board, just so that the town has an idea that these are the areas that the board stresses in their financial policy, and that we've, we follow these each year, whether it's at developing the annual budget or coming to town meeting in the fall to utilize free cash or the stabilization fund, and we've abided by the policy for the most part over the last few years and will do in the future. That is it?
That's all?
Listen, I can go further if you want.
Good, all right, that was very good, per usual, just, we'll open up to the board for just comments, questions?
Real quick, you can see that, that was the smooth sounds of Rich Montori. Lights were low and.
Wait till Saturday morning with the chairman.
I put the spa radio on, that was good. So, again, once again, appreciate the presentation, Mr. Montori, you explained a simple and easy-to-follow budget, well done, level service budget, got to commend the schools, got to commend all the departments, I thank, appreciate the partnership, great collaboration, and the sacrifice, I understand that, especially with the DPW, so it doesn't go unnoticed. Real quick, I think, I appreciate, it's great to see a couple of slides in there, the one that you talked about, the taxes, if they weren't, if there wasn't an increase, you're looking at layoffs, things like that, it's good to point that out. I like your conservative approach, you do your research, where you're breaking down numbers, you're pulling out years that don't make sense, and you're giving us a good projected on local, whether it's local receipts or state aid, whatever, so I appreciate that. Couple of, the big concern is that solid waste disposal that we pointed out with, and Mrs. Tronick mentioned, it's great to see the fiscal policy at the very end, Mr. Johnson, our finance committee chair there, he'll love to see that, he's a big supporter of that. Stability in the next five years is great to see, I know that's just, you know, you know, just, you know, just planning, so that's good. The last thing I'll say is, you know, the Shaw Tech increase at 6%, and you point that out as an assessment to something to watch on, I mean, our school budget, I think I did the math right, it was a Tewksbury math, so, school, the school budget went up 2 and 1/2%.
That's correct.
So, if you, if you did the same 6% increase on the school, our school budget as Shaw Tech, the school would have an extra $2 million in their pocket, so, you know, and that could, you know, the 6% on Shaw Tech could be even, even more. So, it's just, it's difficult to see that go up each year, I understand we need to participate in that, and it's a necessity, but it's just something I'd like to call out, that our school department got 2.5% increase where Shaw Tech at 6%. That's all I want to say, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. Mr. Mark Krappman?
Well, it was very detailed, as usual, going through the budget, I'm sure we'll have additional questions as we go through it, so everybody have a little time to digest what we went through, a lot of numbers going through here, and, you know, but I do want to thank everybody for putting forth a level budget, I do like some of the consolidation of, with the DPW and the schools, that's something that I think with the, with the equipment and those type of things, that we can maybe look at those type of things and other areas in the future, trying to work, you know, we're going to have the schools closer to each other very shortly, and so those type of services and those type of maintenance type of things, we can take into consideration, and, you know, where we can cut and how we can best service these, these facilities that we're building. So, I like the idea, I like the budget, I think it was a great, well-pres, you know, good presentation, so thank you.
Mr. Tronick?
I have a couple of things that I would just like to thank all of the department heads who are here tonight, the residents can't see them, but we have seen them be very attentive tonight, and so I know that a lot of the work of this information came to us through you, so I want to thank you all for your hard work, because I know that this doesn't come without a lot of tedious work, as I was listening to Mr. Montori about how they determine, oh, let's look at this line, and, you know, looking at every single fee, I mean, that's incredibly tedious, and you do it with such pleasure that it amazes me. So, I want to thank you and your team for that, and thank the people who have worked, put in long days, and then have come here to listen to what we think about what they presented to us, I just want to throw that out there. Also, want to make sure that residents will be aware that this will be on our website now that it's been presented.
Yes, so I was going to just mention that after, so the next step is, this presentation had a few edits I need to make, so I'll update the presentation, I'll get it back out to the different boards that I sent it out to already. We'll get this up on the website along with all of the town department budgets, as we have in the past, and all the town budgets are in Excel workbooks with some great detail based on what the department heads presented me. You'll see their priorities also as part of that package, statistics on their departments, vehicle inventories for certain departments, things like that, so that'll all be on the web. I just got to, Janine is on vacation, and she usually does it for me.
He can give you time, I'm just asking.
So, I got to figure that out.
So that people don't go looking for it tomorrow. If you need a week, we'll give you a week.
I'm going to see what we can do, and then copies will be, books we put together after tonight, and there'll be copies in the, at the senior center, the library, town hall, for residents who don't want to go on their website, they can just go get the book and review the hard copies.
That's great. And I gave a shout-out to Ron, I want to make sure I thank him, I also want to thank you and Steve Sadwick, who's here tonight, for taking the time to meet with me, and I think I was there for a couple of hours going through the budget in a lot more detail, and I want to thank you for answering my questions, which I know sometimes seem never-ending. And then, I also have a question on the library fines, so I have one question after all this, if the library fines are about $17,000, if we didn't, I mean, fines are a deterrent, you have them, you know, everywhere else, if we didn't collect those fines, I would like to know what we would, like what the loss, what the risk factor is, or however, like what if we said no library fines, what would, what would be the downside of that? You don't have to answer me tonight, I'm not asking for the information tonight, and do those fines go into the general fund?
Right, they go into that fines and forfeiture account that I mentioned earlier.
So, I'm going to once again advocate that the fines for libraries go into the libraries, if we're going to consider removing them altogether, that we look at library fines as a direct impact to the library. I know I've said that before, but I see you shaking your head.
No, I'm not shaking my, we had this, out of, out of the millions of dollars in local receipts we looked at, we spent a long time talking about 17,000, because Ron was extremely intrigued by the fines and the level of fines, so, and we got an education from the library director and the deputy library director on the philosophy of not fining anybody, so it's something we're going to talk about and see what we want to do.
Okay, so, I'm interested in having that conversation moving forward.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
In all honesty, I think my family's been fined before, guilty charged for the wrong reasons. I just want to say, in conclusion, if you look around to our neighboring communities, there was a slide in here for our tax rate as far as neighboring communities, I would challenge the residents now sitting in this seat getting the close-up look of the work from Mr. Montori and the department heads, I would challenge the residents to look around to get this level of detail, and we're very early in the game, too, I don't, we're not comparing other towns, I'm just saying, from a town perspective, to have Richard Montori, Steve Sadwick, and all the department heads come together this quickly and put this level of detail in the budget, it's just simply incredible. Like I said, no other community demonstrates this level of, I don't like the word transparency, I like the word honest, but this level of transparency to the residents, so very commendable, and I thank you, and I know this isn't easy, but thank you very much, and thank you to the department, great job. Mr. Tronick?
I know, it's my night. I also want to call out the school committee and the finance committee members who are here tonight, too, while we're talking about department heads.
You might have left a few out there, you sure?
And, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I wanted, I should have mentioned in the beginning, the budget process also included, I, myself, Ron Florino, and Steve Sadwick met with each member of the Board of Selectmen individually, and we reviewed the budget in detail with the Board of Selectmen, so this is, you know, the presentation you're seeing as it's presented tonight the first time, but we went through the recap sheet, all the revenues, the expenditures, all the line items within the budget with each of you individually, so I don't want people to think that this board just jumped into this tonight, you've been working on this yourselves with myself and the department heads, so it's been a, you know, long process.
Can't thank you enough. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. On order of business, I guess, all we have left, I mean, you guys are free to go, I can't thank you enough. We have residents, I need residents, I think we're all done with the agenda outside of the agenda of residents, and I need residents like to speak. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion, I have a second?
Did you do minutes?
All's in favor? What's that?
Do you have minutes?
There's no minutes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.